A little bit of background on the agreement and its terms. In 1995, and is amended in 1996.
Madam Solicitor, I apologize. Just, I got a text message because I know this is to interest of folks who aren't with us, that there's video but no audio via the CPS livestream. I'm not sure if anyone's able to help with that. And then, not to, all right, we got a thumbs up, so hopefully that's been addressed. And then, not to be pesky, but if you can get even just a couple inches closer to the microphone.
Oh, sure.
I want to make sure all the important things you're going to say can be heard. Thank you.
All right. Hope you guys can feel my voice inside of you.
That's perfect.
Okay. I will, again, start with a little bit of background. In 1995, and is amended in 1996, the city and county entered into a memorandum of understanding that allocated responsibility and rights for the new stadia constructed for the Reds and Bengals team. Provided that the city and the county each would identify a mechanism for supporting the school board with annual payments by the city and the county to the school board of $5 million each for a total of $200 million. This payment was for the purpose of compensating the school board for lost revenues as a result of the tax-exempt nature of the stadia. This city obligation was memorialized in the 1999 agreement between the city and the school board. This agreement was entered into pursuant to revised Code 570982. This provision requires that a local government and the school board enter into an agreement on tax exemptions and revenue remittance, or, in cases where no agreement is entered, a local government either has limited ability to offer tax incentives, or incentives may be offered, but must be negotiated or approved by the school board on a case-by-case basis. The abatements contemplated apply only to new development or investment in existing development. The base value of any project remains fully taxable. The key terms of the 20-year agreement are: the annual payment by the city to the school board of $5 million for a total of $100 million, which satisfies the city's obligations under the City-County-Stadia MOU. These funds are required to be used for capital improvements. Payments in lieu of taxes at 25% or 27% of the development is in a TIF district; these payments are made to the school board. The city provides services such as community health centers, school resource officers, and a school nursing program. School board prior approval of all tax abatements and real property tax incentives, a waiver of notice, and a waiver of income tax sharing on developments. Residential multifamily developments are not subject to this agreement if the average value per unit is $200,000 at 3% compounded per year, and that value is roughly $330,000. So that's an overview of the agreement and the key terms. And at this point, I'm going to turn things over to Phil Denning, our Community and Economic Development Director.
And Director, just for those of us sitting up here especially who are not facing the screen, we have a vertical presentation and a horizontal presentation. Which one do you want us to follow along with?
You should have, I think what you're looking at there is probably just two slides per page, so...
Okay. The vertical presentation?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Yep. And the first few slides here are just some illustrative photos while I kind of yak on at you, so. So, really, wanted to informally talk a little bit about this agreement, and I think unquestionably we can say that this agreement is still, every day, spurring development, growth, and generating jobs in the city of Cincinnati, and so I wanted to provide some context here. The 1999 agreement hasn't changed all that much since it was signed, but the way the city and my department are utilizing this CRA has changed. It really is not as blunt as it was of an instrument in 1999, so I'll talk a little bit about that. First, our underwriting these days is resulting in fewer abatements at the max term, at the max percentage. That is, the max number of years, the max percentage, as previously. So we're becoming, as a department, more aggressive about how we underwrite these deals. Secondly, due to some legislation from the city council, the amount of abatement is also been reduced over time. It's more limited in general. It's about 20% more conservative with the VTA in the streetcar area and the neighborhoods, so a little bit more aggressive on that front as well. Just as a reminder, the VTA funds from CRAs that happen in the streetcar area are a very important source of funding for the streetcar. And in the neighborhoods, the scorecard that is part of the VTA ordinance for neighborhoods is also kind of resulting in neighborhood funding and affordable housing funding, so just a little bit of context there. You know, talking a little bit more about underwriting, this is a "but-for" incentive, and we take that very seriously in my department. The goal, of course, is to unlock private investment, and that's how we utilize the program. The gap incentive, gap-filling incentive, directly reduces a project's operating cost during the term of the incentive, and that operating reduction can drastically affect the financial feasibility of a potential development project. During the application process, during the incentive underwriting process, my department's staff asks for a financial assistance application. That's available online, and happy to share that if that's worthwhile. But we do request a fair bit of comprehensive information from development proposals, sources and uses document, a 10-year operating pro forma for how you project your development project is going to perform. My staff also considers factors of project performance: rate of return, cash-on-cash return, debt coverage ratio of the project, internal rate of return, and some other performance factors that we take into account, that aren't always about, hey, can you developer make a dollar on your project, but a little bit more about, hey, developer, can you convince a banker to lend you money for your project, which is kind of where sometimes the situation gets a little more sticky. So, and I'm just kind of flashing through some slides here of before and afters that you have on your sheet. You can kind of flip through those. You know, did want to take a minute to look back at where we were in 1999 when this agreement was signed. This chart itself goes back to 1840, which is probably a little earlier than we needed to show, but regardless, it's, I think, some really important historical context. The goals of my department are twofold: population growth and employment growth. You know, in population growth, we want to enhance quality of life, and we take that very seriously with all kinds of projects and incentives for streetscape improvement in public garages, blight reduction, small business lending, you know, sense-of-place projects, neighborhood development projects in business districts to attract and retain residents. And then, on the employment side, obviously, enhancing the business case for attracting and growing jobs. Just a little bit of context. So, you know, clearly, in 1999, if you take a look, you kind of saw where the city has been heading for about the last 50 years, and I think this is a really important chart. I think our perspective is that the small leveling there at the end of the graph maybe isn't necessarily proof that the continuum we're on and have been on for the past few years here is just the new normal, without really some intentional incentive programs. And then, wanted to also give a little bit more, kind of wider, context about the competitive nature of real estate investment in the city. So, as you see on your slides, I know you can't see the presentation, but as you see on the slides, there are some peer-city competitors here. You know, capital and the flow of capital is not geographically restricted. We spend a lot of time on the jobs front and the real estate development front, convincing others to make their investments here in Cincinnati as compared to some other places. And it's not just a matter of, do I put my money here, or do I put my money somewhere else, but the bond market is, has decent returns, and stock market, and there are other investment avenues as well. So these are all things that are part of the context of our underwriting. The only thing this slide doesn't show is that the competitive nature of our environment is a lot smaller and closer than this as well. You know, we see our immediate neighbors, suburban neighbors, Blue Ash, and Mason, and Montgomery, and Covington, and even Liberty Center, they are trying to approach our best competitive advantage as a collective city, which is density, urbanism, and culture. And you see in those cities recent announcements of big development projects, and so that's something else we take into account as well, that our competitive environment is not just this big region, but it's just right there in Norwood, and it's just right there in Blue Ash. I think that's really important. A couple of examples, and you have these on your sheet as slides. The first one is machine flats. I think mine are out of order, but I'll go in your order. The first one is machine flats. If this project were not to have happened, over the past eight years, the school district would have received about $50,000 over the last eight years. With the pilot in place, the school district received $170,000, which is about three times more than if the project hadn't happened. When the abatement ends, in the next couple of years, the school board will receive three times more than the original project for the history of the investment. So essentially, during the term of the CRA, three times more money was kind of received and taxes paid to the school board per the 25% agreement, and once it ends, the three times will actually continue. The next one here is the Residence Inn, which is downtown. I should have said, the first one, the last example was in Camp Washington, if you didn't know. The next example is Residence Inn. This project, if it didn't happen, the base value for 12 years would have been about Since the project did move forward, the school board did receive $1.1 million, which is about three times what the pre-project would have received. Once the abatement rolls off in 2023, the school board can expect six times what the original project was receiving. So again, we can provide these numbers, but these are just kind of big multipliers, I think, are really indicative of the importance of the development, but also benefits to all parties. The next one here is De Sales Plaza. About $100,000 would have been received if the project hadn't happened. Instead, during the term of the abatement, the school board received about $500,000, so about five times the amount, and once it's over, it'll be about six times for the, you know, for, when the project is not incentivized. And then the last one here, just to put a pin in it, is East University in Corryville. About 30 grand is what would have flowed to the school board if the project hadn't happened. Instead, about five times that flowed to the school board during the term of the agreement, and after it ends, the school board receives 10 times the original abated, the original value. So we can provide those numbers. I'll kind of wrap up here, but just basically, you know, my department's goals were presented, and I think we can all agree those are worthy goals. I think the largest takeaway I'd want to leave you with is that this has been a, this agreement has been a hugely impactful and effective tool for growing the city, growing CPS, and so much of the renaissance that we're experiencing can be attributed in part to these incentives. Some key items are up there on the slide that we really see moving forward as we continue this collaborative relationship are stability and predictability. The length of the real estate diligence process is important. You know, somebody buys a property, goes through a year of investment in architectural drawings and environmental abatement, and they really hope, and then they apply for an incentive, and they really kind of need to know during that year's worth of time what that is going to look like, you know, whether that project is worth investing in. And so that's, I guess, it. I can wrap up and pass back to Paula here, and just leave you with, looking forward to working together to put something that's mutually beneficial in the same way that this has been.
Great. Thanks, Director. And Solicitor, I know you're going to do this anyway, but maybe if you can go into a little bit more detail, I think many of us are interested in the process, so we know when the expiration date is, but are there any milestones between now and then that you think, for the purposes of having, you know, such a significant agreement together that we need to hit along the way? And then, if you can speak a little bit more to, you know, what the inputs will be around crafting this, both staff-to-staff and elected-to-elected?
As you said, council member, the agreement does expire December 31 of 2019. There are no milestones, per se, that are in stone besides reaching an agreement, or perhaps an amendment to the agreement before that date. It is an important time for both the city and the school board to identify key points of contact for discussions and negotiations. I do think both parties would benefit from reaching some sort of common understanding of the long and short-term impacts of real property tax incentives on both the city and the school board. The way that we have typically approached these large negotiations is that we identify an internal city team to work with the partner to negotiate a framework of an agreement. We do periodic presentations to the elected officials, and then we would ultimately present it for passage by the full council once an agreement was reached.
And I'm sure, given the incredibly collaborative nature of these bodies, it wouldn't happen, but in the event that something weren't struck by December 31, 19, what then happens? Is it a default continuation or something else?
Mr. Chair, the agreement will expire, and the statutory terms will then be in place. And those statutory terms would allow the city to provide some incentives without school board approval, but they would be very limited in nature, and the city would always be at liberty to negotiate with the school board on a case-by-case basis to, on particular deals.
Okay. Madam Vice President, why don't we, just one housekeeping thing, why don't we open up for questions and comments from both sides? We do have, I think, four or five folks who filled out a yellow card. We will get to you after. We've had some of the deliberation. If anyone does want to make public comment, if they can see the, yeah, if they can see our clerk on the left-hand, our left-hand side of the room, and just fill out a yellow card, so open the floor up at this point.
Do board members have questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice President and Mr. Chair. Couple things. I think it would be helpful for all the elected officials and the public to probably have a summary, as has been presented, from the CPS perspective, because I'm sure it's quite different. But very, this is very helpful, and I appreciate it. I'm interested in a couple things. The very last thing you said, after the expiration of this agreement, then the city would have the opportunity to not necessarily negotiate with the school board regarding abatements or other sorts of arrangements to spur economic development. What's statutorily required of the city if there is no agreement?
Mr. Chair, to the school board member, the revised code requires that, without an agreement, the city is able to offer CRA tax abatements at less than 50% for 15 years, or TIF abatements for 75% for up to 10 years. If any of those projects involve new jobs or new payroll that exceed $1 million, then there would be a 50-50 income tax sharing requirement on those, on those developments.
Madam Board, if you don't, will you say each of those one more time? I know a lot of people who aren't with us are paying very close attention tonight, and I think that's very important information, so if you would just lay those three things out one more time, in terms of tools in our tool shed, without the collaboration of CPS?
For CRA, 15-year abatements at less than 50%. For TIF, 75% abatements for up to 10 years. And in all cases, for any development in which payroll, new payroll or new jobs exceeds $1 million, there would be a 50-50 income tax sharing requirement.
If I might, as a follow-up, and the role of the school district in those arrangements would be what, without an agreement?
That would be without any school board agreement. Those requirements are in place. With, of course, larger abatements can be negotiated if the school board approves.
And if I, one more question, if I could. I know when this was begun, we mentioned 95, and then the agreement in 99, and there were parts of it, too, that dealt with, I think, school nurses, as you mentioned, and crossing guards, or resource office, whatever, was also kind of part of it, but I think it would be very helpful for us to understand the economic conditions, and I think you all alluded to it, in 99 versus the economic conditions now, as to need for continued abatement. And so I do think it would be great for everyone to understand where we were economically as a city and as a district. I do notice, too, that our enrollment growth is at a higher percentage than the city's population growth by significant numbers. So I think that's interesting in that it's not just people moving back to the city, but gaining a larger and larger market share. So all of that's very helpful for us, both the number of children we want to teach and also the amount of money we get per child. So I do think it would be great to have a better understanding of where we were economically in 99, and the justification for this versus now.
To the Chair and to the council member, I think, happy to have that discussion, probably going to require a little bit more time to go back and do some analysis, and probably more fruitful to do that with some numbers in front of me than kind of thinking in general about the economy at the time, but...
Because how much of this, at the end of the day, is, you know, a lot of work and a lot of negotiation that's going to go into agreeing to, you know, the final manifestation of an agreement being, what's that percentage, versus it could take other forms?
To the Chair, to the council members and school board members, I think really that is going to be a decision that comes out of these conversations as we move forward about what provides, at least from the city's perspective, the most protection for the city's budget, the economic development kind of potential or risk of one of those alternatives, and the flexibility or control that the city has. And I think, you know, the answers might be different from a school board member, but I think that's what I'd say.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if you can provide, or do you have an analysis of every abated project since 99, under the agreement, to date, that reflects what you were describing? The tax, the taxes that were being paid before the improvement has contrasted the taxes that were paid during the abatement, and to the extent that the project is one that the abatement period has ended, what the taxes are now? I think that's very useful information to understand what this has wrought.
To the Chair, to the council member, we actually have been thinking about these for a little while. It took a number of my staff members quite a bit of time to get where we were to the table today, so to go back and do that for every one of these tax abatements, obviously, is a significant amount of work, and I think we have that to look forward to, because I do think, especially from the city's perspective, that's really, really important information, and I feel that the data really makes a strong case, so...
And the hard part, of course, always, is the proposition "but-for." If you don't abate, what happens? And you talked about underwriting, and to a layperson, that means what? That you're analyzing the project to try and understand whether it's true that, when the developer says, oh, jeez, if you don't abate, we can't do it, or we won't do it?
Sure. To the Chair, to the council member, at its most basic form, I think that's right. I think that the ultimate answer to this, to that question, both from the administration's perspective and also city council's perspective, is what is the risk, what is the appetite risk, for risk of the worst-case scenario, essentially, I think, is probably the principal question.
Mr. Messer?
Thank you. Couple of things. One thing I'd love us to follow up on is the comments on the multiple times more dollars when the abatement rolls off because of our fixed-sum levies. So if we could just check that and make sure that that, in fact, will or will not happen. I think that's issue number one that there's a question about. And then, you know, I think the photos that you showed are impressive. Having spent my time in the early days of Over the Rhine, where I bought buildings that looked like that, there was a time where you couldn't get a bank loan, you were borrowing against your 401K to do a property, and so those incentives felt right. My question to you is, have you thought about potential changes that would be based on the evolution of our city since 99? Any changes that you would make to the agreement as it stands today?
To the Chair, to the school board member, I can't really talk about any potential changes. Honestly, I haven't gotten that quite that far into it. But, you know, I would illustrate your really powerful example with a couple of other examples, which is that in 1999, one could have purchased a 50,000-square-foot, you know, four-story-high building in Over the Rhine for $15,000, and proceeded with, once financing was secured, the project. The reality is that the base acquisition price for a building of that nature is probably more like in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and so even though the financing is potentially easier to secure, the acquisition price has kind of filled the gap. So I think there are a number of, kind of, project underwriting criteria like that that have shifted, in addition to a variety of other, obviously, I kind of talked about the amount of abatement shrinking because of VTA, which is not a school board function, obviously, city function, but also, you know, construction costs are trending 4%, 5% every year, every year, and we're finding projects that essentially die before they start construction because construction costs have just moved too much in the last year. So I think these are kind of a lot of the moving kind of levers that we're finding in our workday today.
Mr. Silbuck?
Just a couple of things. You know, there's no better solution to crime than economic development, so what's happened in OTR, and unlike recently, but overall, where we've seen development, we've seen a reduction in crime. And so I say that just because I don't think we can look at any of these economic development deals in a vacuum. So I will probably be the first one to say that we absolutely give away too much to developers. We only need to give a single penny more than what would take to bring the jobs or development to the city, and oftentimes, we do give away more than that single penny. However, I don't think we can look at development in terms of just because we gave away property taxes, we gave job creation tax income credits, that we were just giving up something, because we gained a building that was falling down, that was underdeveloped, that sidewalks were crumbling, that no one lived in, that there weren't jobs in, and all of those are intangible gains, but they're gains that benefit both the city and the school board, and the school district. So I think it's very important that we not look at these giving away of potential taxpayer dollars as not getting anything for it, other than the increased in the property value, because there are, I think, many other intangible benefits that we all receive as a result of renovated buildings. But that doesn't mean that we're not giving away more than we should. I think we are.
Thank you, Mr. Silbuck. I do have one question, Director. I mean, how much do you think, rather than sort of hard-nosed negotiation, and I will also say, I mean, you know, all of us at this table get along very well, that... also say, I mean, you know, all of us at this table get along very well, that I don't think this should necess, I mean, when the school district is doing great, that's also, it's the right thing for the families of the school district, but it's also good for the city's economy. It makes people want to live here. So, I mean, this is a very symbiotic relationship, and I think that needs to be the frame that we look at this. I'm also curious how much you feel like math can almost determine the answer, at least in terms of the overall level of abatement. I mean, I would think if you got some math geeks in a room to, you know, run some regressions, there's probably some point where you are maximizing the level of development and maximizing the amount of funds that end up going back to students and teachers and schools. And if you go lower, you might get more development, but the schools are then actually getting less because it's a lower number. If you go higher, you stymie development, so even though they're getting a higher percentage, they're actually getting less overall money. I mean, how much will that guide this process versus just, you know, people getting in a room and digging into their position?
To the chair, I think math is certainly going to play a huge role here, and part of it is, what is the math from how the city sees the development? And I could not agree more, to be frank with Councilmember Seelbach, that the intangibles associated with the math are more beneficial in a lot of ways than are able to be compounded. But the school board side of the equation is also really important, and probably, at least from what I've seen in terms of the school funding formulas, wildly more complicated in some ways. And that in itself has changed over time based on the state's funding scenario, and what it was like then, what it was like now, and what it may be like in the future, which we don't know. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's certainly a math problem in a lot of ways, and that's, to Councilmember Mann's point, what we're going to have to be working through over the next bit of time.
I mean, that would be one of my first charges to the administration, is to say, you know, to come back and say, based on whatever inputs we put into this equation, we believe that this is more or less, I mean, let's be honest, we're trying, we're going for a sort of Goldilocks approach here, where we get this just right, or it's just right for the city of Cincinnati, and it's just right for the school district. But there is, and here I'm talking a lot about the percentage of the abatement, but there's an actual point that simultaneously maximizes development and the incentivizing of development, and in turn, as a function of that, maximizes the dollars that end up flowing to the school district, which is all of our answer. The one other point I want to make, and I say this as someone who's tried to, you know, work as hard as I can to be a huge advocate for CPS and the wonderful momentum of the city, but I think one thing we have to keep in mind a little bit, because I think sometimes people think, well, you know, if a developer is going to make a margin of 7.6%, is going to make a margin of 6.8% instead of 7.6%, I get that most people are like, well, you know, they're not going to go hungry, they're going to be doing just fine. But so much of this is about the flow of private capital in the first place. And if, when they run the numbers, something has them below seven and something else has them above seven, that's where I do think your map with Nashville and, you know, Austin and Boston and wherever other cities were on there, we have to keep competitive enough that on the front end, private capital doesn't say Cincinnati's not making itself attractive. I mean, I do very much believe we can hit that Goldilocks sweet spot, but we need to be mindful of, you know, how folks who are risking their capital are thinking about this. Mr. Lansman?
Just to make this a little bit more complicated, I think another number that would be helpful throughout this whole process, to the extent it's attainable, is what kind of tax relief would homeowners experience with changes to our abatement policy? To Mr. Messer's point, because of state law, the amount of money that the district can get is capped by the various levies. So it's, each levy can only generate a certain amount of money, right? And we've done this, we've done something similar to ourselves, where we have, we've capped what, just because this has been an ongoing fight of Mr. Mann's, we've capped ourselves in terms of what we can get in terms of property revenue, property tax revenue every year. So my point is, if you, if it changes, and we no longer, right, because every time we provide an abatement, which the, what has to be generated in terms of the money to the city and what has to be generated in terms of the school district and the levies and so on and so forth, that gets put on all of the other homeowners, all of the other property owners. And so I think, and this is complicated, I just, to the extent it's possible, I think it's helpful for the community to understand, if there is an adjustment, and we are, even if we can't experience more revenue because of a state cap or because of a cap we put on ourselves, it does still mean that there's tax relief to the existing property owners throughout the school district and the city, and I think that's a number that the community should have.
To the chair, to the council member, just, I actually can't speak as intelligently about the levy side and the cap that you speak about on that side. Point of clarity, because of the property tax rollback and the city's number, the impact of abatements on the city administration, on the city's budget, is revenue neutral. And I guess I would challenge a little bit that the abatement puts that tax on other homeowners, because the way that has actually worked is, as property values rise, as the auditor reassesses properties and property values rise, the city's share of the tax on the homeowner actually falls as council back-adjusts the millage down. So actually, the city's contribution to that amount has actually lessened for the homeowner as the millage goes down. So there's more, kind of, a longer conversation to have about the way that flows, but.
But from a city standpoint, we have to generate, what's the number?
$29 million.
$29 million a year. If you add up all the levies, it's what?
$165 million on our three fixed-sum levies.
So $165 million, and then the other levies have to generate a certain amount of money. And we do that by taxing property owners. Every time we give an abatement, and I appreciate the relevancy and the necessity of these abatements, certainly many of these abatements, I do think it's time to look at it, and to the extent we can do what Mr. Sittenfeld said in terms of really understanding where that, you know, ideal but-for number is, you know, we should do that. But if these levies and the city and the county have to generate this amount of money every year, and we're abating, you know, these certain property owners, that means that everyone else pays a little bit more. And meaning that if you were to pull back on some of the abatements, that could mean real property tax relief for property owners. And to the extent we can calculate that, I think that's helpful.
Good. Chair, Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. I appreciate your reference regarding funding being different regarding 1999 and now, just the amounts of money that we get from the state, and all that has changed significantly. And while, I do want to make sure that part of the figuring of the next, the previous years, you figure in the $1.2 billion that taxpayers paid for the facility's master plan, and I think 78% of that was local funding. So that's all part of this economic development as well. And in that, as the old history teacher and me, social studies teacher, it is not just a matter of numbers, but it's also a matter of geography for us, from a standpoint that we want the city to thrive, but we have obligations even beyond the city. So geographically, we get concerned, I think, if we see too much concentrated effort in particular places, when we are actually, you know, throughout the city, but also even the edges of our city, have an impact on the rest of our school district, whether it's Silverton, or whether it's Amberly Village, or whether it's parts of Dalhuy or Green Township, or just the west side of town. So that is of concern to us as we move forward, because I would hope there would be some sort of effort, almost another kind of dialogue, about what your vision is regarding the future and what our vision is regarding the future. Because we're concentrating right now on particular neighborhoods and revitalizing our neighborhood schools. So there's plenty of things for us to be talking about, even, and we don't want to negotiate tonight, but even the length of 20 years is a very, very difficult thing for us to kind of grasp. So we're going to find common ground on this, but we have to understand it won't necessarily just be negotiations among the hired folks and the elected officials. This is going to take place in a very charged political environment, too. And so the more we can get along and have the open dialogue, the better it will be. But geography is part of it for us, whether it's the west side or the edges of the city, and recognizing we had to do a scattered development, if you will, based upon where people lived. And we need more concentration in those neighborhoods than we've seen recently.
Ms. Bolton, I know Mr. Messer had a saying, but Ms. Bolton raises one great point. I'm assuming the duration of this agreement will ultimately be whatever the two sides agree to. I mean, there's nothing in state statute or something else that says this needs to be a decade or two decades, or, I mean, obviously, you know, a little bit self-defeating to say, let's come back and do this every single year. I personally, I'll go on record as saying, I did not love your scenario where we come together in this for every single deal to decide between ourselves what the level of abatement should be, but there's nothing, I mean, just because the prior one was 20 years doesn't mean the next one needs to be. Is that correct? Okay.
Mr. Messer?
Thank you. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I have to say, this is exciting to have this dialogue here, along with Vice President Copeland-Dansby and Board Member Bates. We comprise the group that work with our incredible treasurer to look at today's dollars, but also looking forward to future dollars. So a couple of things I think would be useful for this conversation. A, it has been a true education to understand school funding and to understand the formula that dictates how much, or I should say, how little we get from Columbus compared to other major urban districts across the state. So I think that's an important piece, and then just talking about school funding, I think that's something that would be useful in this conversation. But probably most importantly, there's, I believe, a symbiotic relationship between development and schools. As a former Community Council President, the first thing you get asked about a neighborhood, whether it's a business owner wanting to invest or a resident, is how are the schools? And I think that we have done such a great job under the leadership of our incredible Superintendent Mitchell and the board that came before me. We have a true blessing that we're not declining, like most districts across the country, we're increasing. One of the few urban districts that's increasing population. And I think that is a thing that probably all of us around this table and everybody in the audience celebrates. And so along with Vice President Copeland-Dansby, Board Member Bolton and myself, we comprise the Strategic Planning Committee, and we're going to be looking at where this district will be in the next five, 10, and then 20 years. And I think that will be an important feeder to this process, because there will be additional resources required as our population continues to increase.
Great. Chair? Mr. Mann?
I just, soon after you took office, Ryan, we had a conversation about who was monitoring the payments of the 25% that developers agreed to pay. And it turned out the city doesn't do much there, and I don't know whether you've had any more success determining how vigilant on your side that is taking place. But I think it's certainly an issue that we need to address. And also, we're finding out with the streetcar fatigue that some of the assumptions about the relation between the cost of development and its likely valuation for property tax purposes don't exist. And so those are issues that we need to make sure we understand as we go forward.
Right. If it's all right with our colleagues, and we can certainly come back to this, if we ask if the solicitor and the director can not depart finally, but let's hear from the public, then come back to tie a bow around this conversation, at least in terms of immediate next steps. And then, I think we are still, we know it's a school night, people want to get home, try and have dinner with their family, other obligations.
We're out of space.
Yeah, well, you guys, it's, that's true. Oh, understood. Can I announce that? All right, Mr. Mann is leaving for the very worthy causes. He has a date with his mother who is 100 years old, so that's a gift. Give Mrs. Mann a round of applause. So we will try and have everyone out of here by 6:30. So let's go to public speakers. If you'll come down to this microphone and get cozy with it. First speaker will be Barbara Bowlin, followed by Craig Rosen, followed by Nick, and I apologize not being able to read your last name. So Barbara, the floor is yours, and I hope this doesn't seem draconian to anybody, but out of being respectful to everyone, we'll do two minutes a person. And do we have a buzzer? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Boylan. I'm a resident of Northside, former parent, no, I'm still a parent, I'm a Cincinnati public school student. I'm here to fully support the communication sent by the Teachers Union to all Board of Education and City Council members yesterday, I believe, and it just is in the paper, in case you didn't see it, it just got in the paper, apparently. From my view, watching the Board of Education and City Council vote for the recent tax and land shelter giveaway for FCC investors, to watching my neighborhood, Northside, flip houses and offer abatements for buyers who do not need abatements, while vulnerable neighbors get moved out, it is clear that campaign contributions and having special meetings with investors with money is the way to go and win when it comes to development in Cincinnati. If there cannot be a tax abatement agreement for CPS higher than the current $5 million, that includes recuperation of the $8.4 million that cited in the letter that was provided to you yesterday, lost for CPS from the abatement blitz of the last 15 years, I think we need to be told why. If there cannot be a real-time public tracking system of abatements out and money due and paid to CPS, I think we need to be told why. A robust and monitored tax agreement with CPS can protect us perhaps a little from the inequitable development decisions being made by politicians in our city and county. And I guess I feel even more strongly, given the comments that were just made by the city person here, and I'm sorry, who was that? The person from the city?
That was our city solicitor.
That's our city solicitor.
City Economic Development Director.
Whose name is?
Their names are Paula Boggs-Muthing and Phil Denning.
Okay, great. Yeah, because that made it more clear in terms of where the investment dollars are going to go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And as our next speaker, Craig Rosen comes up, followed by Nick, who, I apologize for not being able to read the last name, and we're, not all of these are about this abatement, but let's do all the public comment at once, followed by Sue Wilkie. Madam Clerk, for our committee purposes, can we take the CFT letter, which is in front of all of us, and file it as an official communication, please? Mr. Rosen, the floor is yours for two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Sittenfeld, CPS, Board Members, City Council Members, Staff, Administrators, Guests. Thank you for taking the opportunity to have a public discussion and start that now for the 1999 tax abatement agreement between Cincinnati Public Schools, the City of Cincinnati, and our residents and business owners. I've been fortunate over the years to become extremely familiar with CPS finances, the pros and cons of the 1999 agreement, from a taxpayer and advocate of CPS, to my professional consulting endeavors, in addition to interactions with developers, business leaders, and community leaders. As such, I hope CPS and the city will continue the trend of transparent discussions and open engagement. Examples of this style recently seeking public opinion, actual public opinion, was evident in recent negotiations with Football Club Cincinnati, and even going back to the superintendent search and selection process of Superintendent Mitchell. With the 1999 agreement ending soon, now's a perfect time to discuss new alternative options that can provide more inclusive growth for our communities. Balancing the needs of a community with the opportunities desired by redevelopment is critical. Therefore, I hope future discussions will include some of these ideas, including rubrics to weigh the scope of a proposed project, community engagement and project abatements, and creation of TIFs. Much like planning and zoning requests that flow to the local area community councils, we hope that if public dollars are utilized for a project, they at least have to come before a community council for discussion. In addition, make whole payments that allow a true act- In addition, make whole payments that allow a true, actual, present value deferred payment so that when projects have issues in the beginning, paying their fair share, we can find unusual and creative ways so that everybody wins. Affordable housing set aside, such as 110% of AMI and other topics, I hope you will continue to have these discussions so we can relay more information.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. And if anyone wants to submit their, if they have what they have written down, they can submit it as a written correspondence for both of the committees. So we'll have Nick, followed by Sue Wilkie, followed by Kevin Flynn. And I think we're going to bring Mr. Flynn a handheld mic when it's his turn. So floor is yours for two minutes. Thank you for being here.
Ladies and gentlemen, I didn't write anything down. And the topic that I want to talk about, you guys ain't even talking about it. But I just want you to see my face. The Indigenous Project is coming up, and some of the very men and women are in here with the very ones that passed it last time. The foundation of America, we're going to find out who they really were. And those people are the ones that responsible for the White House, which they used to call a palace, the Tekin, all of that was the Indigenous people. And this city, Cincinnati, is going to be one of the major cities that's going to pass this. And then we're going to find out why Cincinnati is called the Queen City. Most of us in here don't even know why it's called the Queen City. It was Indigenous people that called it that. And I'm hoping that this city will be one of the major cities, will help this happen so it will help this one more thing, help eliminate racism. Racism exists because of what we've been taught. Believe it or not, before Columbus, racism didn't exist. It didn't. It didn't. The white race, well, I don't want to call it race, they knew they came from a black race. Now, I know that's hard for some people to fathom, but that's just the way I am. I'm just telling you the truth. That's the reason why they was able to fight the South. It didn't exist. And I'm tired of talking about race. I really am. I'm sick and tired of it. And until we correct that, and we can correct that with the Indigenous Project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And how do we say, pronounce your last name?
Talbert.
Say it one more time?
Talbert.
Talbert, great.
You can do it French, Tobere.
Thanks so much. Sue Wilkie, followed by Kevin Flynn, followed by Sue Magnan. And while Sue's making her way to the microphone, I know we already acknowledged former Board Member Vanessa White, also want to, politicians love acknowledging other politicians. It's this weird tick we have. Want to acknowledge former Senate Minority Leader Eric Kearney's with us tonight, and former Congressman Steve Dreehouse also here tonight. Thank you, guys, for being here. Ms. Wilkie, the floor is yours for two minutes.
Good evening. I echo the comments of Ms. Boylan and Mr. Rosen, but I'm here to comment tonight on pedestrian safety. You have to be in a coma for the last couple of years to not know that pedestrian safety has been a major issue in the community of Northside. And while I'd like to thank Council Members Seelbach and Sittenfeld and Mann for their efforts to help us in our community, I think that it's focused primarily on the business district, and what's been overlooked is the schools. And I'm here tonight as a member of the Parker Woods LSDMC. We have tried over the last couple of years, parents, PTO, school administration, to get a crossing guard at Pullen and Hamilton. A study was done, and we were told that there weren't enough walkers. The reason there are not enough walkers is parents are afraid for their children to walk there. One father told me that he goes to work every morning before his son walks to school and waits to see if he gets a phone call that maybe his son has been hit. This should not, this should not continue. The school, as you know, sits off of Beach Hill and Langland, so it's not on a direct thoroughfare, but it does involve children using Pullen, Langland, and they're very busy intersections. We need a crossing guard, and we also need the crosswalks to be repainted, and we need slow signs. And I don't know why in four years it has taken so long to do this. We do appreciate what's been done in front of McKee with the flashing yellow light, which does help the children going to chase. But we're going to have an accident, and somebody's going to get hurt trying to get to Parker Woods. And while I appreciate all the efforts around the community itself, some of the forgotten areas of the community involve areas where children need to cross and need to be safe. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Wilkie. And we're actually going to speak to briefly a pedestrian safety coordination matter because it's something both of these bodies care about a lot. I did not acknowledge him as a former elected official because he's actually our next speaker. So we'll hear next from former Council Member, our colleague Kevin Flynn, followed by Sue Magnan, followed by Marlene Brookfield. Council Member.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, but you really never have to remind me of that. I want to thank you all for being together here tonight because I think it is important. I started talking about the end of this agreement and the need to renegotiate it while I was still on council because this is very important, both for the school district and for the city, because we are competing with other developers. And it's very easy to go to the city of Norwood, which has an agreement, and get that abatement. But I think one of the things that's lost is that, and Mr. Messer, I think, hit on it a little bit, is the complicated nature of the state funding formula. Because the abated values of all of these properties don't go on to our tax rolls, and so they don't further reduce the state basic funding formula that would further reduce the amount that we would receive from the state. So if we added all of that value on to the state, on to the tax rolls, the money that we received from the state would go down even further, which would mean, when this was originally done, the 25% was meant to make the schools whole. I think there is a mathematical calculation that should be made. What is it under this current state funding formula that makes the city whole versus getting the 25% that they get? Is it 30%? Is it 32%? Is it 27%? I think that's the real question. And then relative to Mr. Mann's point, and Mr. Young was on this before I was ever on it, the TIRC, the Tax Incentive Review Council, and there's a representative of the School Board on that as well, has all of the agreements and all of the active agreements. So if you go back a few years, you should be able to capture whether they're performing and whether they're not performing.
Thank you very much, Council Member Flynn. And my apologies, I grew up with a proud CPS graduate named Nick Magnan, so sometimes that name is on my brain, and this is actually Sue Mangan, so my apologies for getting your name wrong. So we'll hear from Sue Magnan, followed by Marlena Brookfield, followed by Eleanor Fusco. So the floor is yours for two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for opening this discussion. I hope to see you often in the next year because this, I think, is really important. It's important because the presentation and our approach in the past has been just give developers everything they want. And maybe there was a reason for that 20 years ago. And we are not complaining about what has been positive about the development, but we do need to reevaluate our priorities. And studies have shown over and over again that infrastructure, transportation, and an educated workforce are much more important in development than giving away tax abatements. And we are, in our opportunity now to review the past, we have to look at the fact that we have such a high poverty rate. It's embarrassing to say that we're a successful city when our poverty rate is one of the worst in the country. 40%, I think it is. And if our development of the past 20 years has been so successful, why do we have such a high poverty rate? There's a disconnect there. Wealthy people are doing well, quite well. Hyde Park is getting, I have a tax abatement on my Hyde Park house that I got 12 years ago when I put on an extension. I didn't need that. I don't. But my architect said, "If you fill out these papers, you can get a tax abatement." So I did it. Why are people getting tax abatements that don't need them? Hyde Park is getting tons of tax abatements, Oakley. When we have such a need for infrastructure, transportation, and our educated workforce is certainly not benefiting for what's happened in the last 20 years.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Magnan. Our final three speakers will be Marlena Brookfield, followed by Eleanor Fusco, followed by Michelle Dillingham. So Ms. Brookfield, the floor is yours for two minutes. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Good evening, Board, Council, Marlena Brookfield, CPS grad and parent. We are not the Cincinnati of 20 years ago. And I would argue that slide with the population loss, a lot of that is due to white flight to the suburbs, in part so families could put their kids in good schools and live in good neighborhoods. What they really mean is schools with a decidedly less diverse population. Public education in general is experiencing a funding crisis, and we've all been hearing about fair funding, especially in the wake of the FCC decision. So what's fair about continuing to pass out abatements like Halloween candy? They have their necessity in certain cases, I will grant that. But what we have here is out of control, and from what I've learned in coming to Board Committee meetings, where the city is concerned, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. Our district, we do great things. Our kids do great things. The opportunities that our district offers compared to what was available even when I graduated 15 years ago, they're just, it's amazing. It's incredible what we have to offer. And in addition to getting investment in the city, we need to make sure we're investing in our schools and our children, not continually putting the onus on the taxpayers. We need to invest in growing our talent pool here at home so they don't leave for the Pittsburgs, the Nashvilles, the Cleavlands. They are the Cincinnati of 20 years from now.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brookfield. Ms. Fusco, followed by Ms. Dillingham. Thanks for being here. Speak close to the mic, and the floor is yours for two minutes.
Hi, City Council Members, CPS Board. I was just wondering, now that you are developing the new agreement, if you can keep in mind also preservations, like if just not new building, to try to consider to give incentive to people that preserved versus just new building, making the formula attractive for preservations, whether with percentage or whether with lengths? And also to make it incentivized, again, whether giving a higher percentage or more years of tax abatement for projects that include affordable housing, some unit for affordable housing, and that also in the top three neighborhoods in Cincinnati, there shouldn't be tax abetted. Not that in Hyde Park, we are having what, if I recall correctly, like 50% of the residential tax abetted. That seems too much. Seems to me that there should be incentivized in lengths and percentage in really struggling neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fusco. Our final speaker would be Michelle Dillingham.
Good afternoon, Michelle Dillingham. I'm really proud of a lot of people here tonight who are members of the Cincinnati Educational Justice Coalition. We picked this policy last year as one to focus on for the entire year. It just so happened that the FC Cincinnati project came around as an issue in February. But prior to that, this is something that we really wanted to advocate for. I just want to throw out a few numbers for you. For the entire school district, that's 55 school buildings and over 30,000 students. I might be a little off on my data, but it's about that. We have 12 full-time librarians. We have 20 school social workers. We have about 50 school psychologists. And we have another 27 high school counselors. These are people who help kids figure out what they want to be when they grow up and help them connect to college. And so, again, these numbers, when I learned of them, really shocked me. Over 30,000 children and 12 librarians for the entire district. So I won't repeat the numbers, but, you know, although we all celebrate Cincinnati Public and it is an incredible district, there are significant needs. And in a time when our kids are dealing with school violence and bullying and poverty and just all the things our kids deal with, they need all the support they can get. So we, at the Cincinnati Educational Justice Coalition, are simply asking, and we would like to participate in really looking for a more nuanced policy around tax abatements. We're not suggesting, I don't think anyone's suggesting, "Get rid of abatements." That's just silly, right? While there's some people who think that. But for our group, we're just asking for a more nuanced approach, and I think that makes sense. There's some great model legislation out there that I'll probably be sending all of you from other cities because we're not alone in this discussion. It's happening all over America. So thank you for the time.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Dillingham. Thank you very much to all of our speakers who care enough about your city and your school district to take the time to come down here. Obviously, if any of my colleagues have additional questions for our Solicitor, Economic Development Director, or anyone on the CPS side, and I saw your hand, Mr. Landsman, I would just offer, and then we'll go back to you, four next steps based on what we've heard tonight. One, obviously, you know, identify the internal teams, respectively, on the staff side from both City of Cincinnati and CPS, and have them, you know, huddle up to kick the process off. Two, I think both, everything that you all have heard directly tonight in terms of requests for data, requests for answers, I think, you know, we can repeat them if you all missed anything. But I think, you know, for people to both take those, and then any other inputs from the policymakers, to say, as you all start working on this process and this sort of staff side that's going to be grinding it out, for us to forward all of those inputs. And then also, obviously, if any member of the public wants an input to be, you know, put in there, pass that along through one of your CPS Board Members or through one of your Council Members. And then the third thing, I would say that this is a permanent item on all future ACES meetings, either if you all have data that you've generated to share with us or to just let us know where things are in the negotiating process. Again, it seems like we have time right now, and we kind of do, but it will wash away very quickly. So, I mean, I think those are the three next steps. Mr. Landsman?
I think that's right. I just, as we, in terms of our, the next round here, to former Council Member Flynn's point, the funding formula, I mean, it is, it is, and I, you know, Michelle just brought this up, there is a, there is this nuanced approach to this that I think is going to benefit everyone. And I'm, it would be great for folks to have a better understanding of the state funding formula, both in terms of the, what the state reimburses CPS per pupil and the calculation, and the role that property taxes play in that calculation. And then the issue of capping our levies, which ones are capped, which ones, which revenue is capped, which revenue is not capped. I think that'll just help as we get to that ideal place of having a very smart, nuanced approach to this. So I think bringing, just having a little more visibility into that would be helpful.
It would be my greatest pleasure to educate on Cincinnati Public Schools' funding.
That's great. If it's okay with you, Chair, I want to call on Mr. Morosky, and then I have a couple comments that perhaps can close this out.
Perfect. Thank you, Vice President Copeland Dansby, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the City of Cincinnati Administration for coming out and giving us that presentation. I actually, to piggyback off of Councilman Landsman, was going to see if I could make an assignment to our Treasurer to give a presentation, maybe I'd like the entire City Council of Cincinnati and interested members of the administration to see it because the way we are funded, we, on paper, were the wealthiest urban district in the state, yet we have the second to fourth on any given day worst childhood poverty rate in the country. And that's because we have the highest amount of Fortune 500 companies per capita of any other city. And we also are the only one of two, to Mr. Messer's point, one of two urban districts that are growing. The other one is Denver. And we have a strategic plan going on, and we have a new council and new school board. And I think it's an awesome opportunity to revisit this. And just a few things I wanted to highlight before I'll give it back to Vice President Copeland Dansby. This wasn't as we renegotiate this deal. The city crossing guards and the city nurses that we've been paying for the past 10 years or so, I would like to, I know we don't have any legal recourse to demand that the city continue to pay their employees that work in our schools, but I think, I think that needs to be at the forefront of the conversation. Also, there were a couple of things, the speaker said a lot of things that triggered a lot in my brain, so I'll try to wrap this up quick. Another thing that wasn't mentioned regarding our funding formula, so we have fixed levies, we're funded unconstitutionally by the state of Ohio. And we also, many people don't know this, we pay the students, we pay for the students in the charter schools in our area. That comes out of our money, and they get twice the amount roughly that our students do. And there are vouchers, and we have a state government that's continuing to perpetuate this kind of behavior. So not only do we need to take this seriously, I also think, another thing I would like to highlight, and then I'll wrap up, is that we do look at the 20-year amount, because $5 million today is not what $5 million was 20 years ago. And so the length of the agreement, I think, is going to become important. And lastly, well, that might be it for now. So thank you so much. And again, thanks to the City of Cincinnati officials and city council coming out today.
Good. Mr. Chair, in the spirit of wrapping this conversation and making some concrete assignments, perhaps to our treasurer and our finance chair, I'd like to continue our conversation in finance related to an assessment of where our current payments are. We, I heard that in this conversation tonight, but not as much as I want to. Number one, because we need to know. Number two is that we don't want to make the same mistakes in how we're measuring that and being accountable there. Also, really being aggressive in putting together the team or whomever is going to interface with the administration of the city to put some parameters around things. I appreciated the PowerPoint and the report. As it relates to next steps in the city's plan here, I want to also parallel that to the, to the school district. And number three, as we're talking about employing strategies, so we need to figure out what our strategies are. You know, the dollars that come in, and, you know, we talked about crossing guards and resource officers and that, what else? What else is important to us? This is a totally different day, in 2019 it will be, than when we started this. So putting the team together, really addressing the issue about assessing where we are in finance, and then moving towards putting together a very concrete team that could back us into a timeline as well. Is that okay?
Great. Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. Our city administration, thank you for being here. You can consider yourself released at this point, but again, know that, you know, for each future-looking ACES meeting, we will have you all on and obviously looking for answers to some of the things we asked. We'll move, I think, somewhat briskly through these follow-up meetings. Ms. Wilkie mentioned pedestrian safety, so this is halfway to report to you all, and also a motion, which I'm sure will have majority support from the city council. Myself and Councilmember Seelbach, along with support from Councilmember Young and Councilmember Lansman, have re-upped the city's policy of allocating a half million dollars explicitly for pedestrian safety. This motion does two things. One, to direct our city administration for similar coordination with CPS, as we have with our community councils, where they do have an existing process for reporting. And I think the response, you know, Mel McVeigh can report out at a future ACES meeting, has been pretty good in terms of when a request comes from a community council, trying to be responsive to that. Ms. Wilkie, I'm sure there's always room for improvement. And then this also says it does not designate a specific amount, but for some portion of that half million dollars to go toward pedestrian safety improvements that impact areas with high concentrations of school-aged children and in close proximity to schools. So we're mindful of our partnership there. So that was on the pedestrian safety. And Madam Chair, the next item, year-end report? Oh, Ms. Bolton?
I'd like to, on behalf of myself, at least as one board member, do want to add to that, if I could, as quickly as possible. We really, I'm sure, appreciate that. And there is some history of our partnership. Six or seven years ago, if you'll recall, there was a mutual grant between the city and the district regarding safe routes to schools. And indeed, there was infrastructure that was provided for, and I think it would be great for the district and the council to see the results of the infrastructure that was built as a result of that grant. Plus, if I recall, this is the first district that created a district-wide safe routes to school plan, which is also a matter of record, which could perhaps guide what you're talking about. And then to the point regarding the crossing guards and safety that Ms. Wilkie mentioned, it's very important for us to begin to have as much of the hardware and safety features around our high schools as well as our elementary schools. And I think that's important. The law doesn't require it around high schools. It does require around elementary schools. And very frankly, I think it would be some of the first places to make that investment. So it's infrastructure as well as collaboration. And I think the master plan, if you will, at least would be 80% already done, even though years have passed. So that would be a great thing for us mutually, staff-wise, to look at that district-wide safe routes to school master plan. And to everyone's point, certainly, the district is very interested in making sure that the crossing guards are the responsibility of the city, both in personnel and financially. Thank you, sir.
Great.
No, I think, I think that's great. And as the next step, I appreciate the motion that we have before us. I wanted to add, in closing, a couple of next steps, perhaps. I think there was a group that met or was going to meet and didn't get together or something happened because of a snow day or something like that, some administrators from the district as well as city administration. So I would suggest that as we're, as we're moving on this motion, that we put together that team to get back to work and to report back to us at our next ACES meeting.
Great. CPS year-end report?
So I was asked to provide an update in terms of Cincinnati Public Schools, in terms of buildings and space within the district. And so I do have just a couple of slides to be able to present to you and talk with you about.
Ms. Mitchell, can you speak into the mic, please?
Yep. I'm so sorry. Thank you. All right. So within our schools, two years ago, we started to implement a program called Vision 2020. It's more of an initiative to revitalize our neighborhood schools. This is really an equity issue that the board took on in terms of making sure that our neighborhood schools have the magnet-like program that our magnet schools enjoy. And so we launched seven schools with different particular program focus. We noticed that there was a dramatic increase in student achievement in reading and mathematics within those schools. In addition, those schools had 200 more students than the previous year. The 200 more student wasn't a, just a result of additional families moving into the city. It was a result of people actually choosing to send their kids to Cincinnati Public Schools who were already within the city. And so we're really excited about that. We then decided to launch an additional nine schools this school year, and we will be additionally launching another six next school year. So we'll continue to build out the Vision 2020 schools into all of our neighborhood schools who have a magnet-like focus like our magnet programs. So that's just kind of an update on Vision 2020. When we think about buildings and capacity, last year, as a result of our enrollment growth, we actually had to open three new buildings. So last year, we opened Leap School, which is in North Fairmount. We started that with a pre-K through third grade program, and we'll be expanding it to fourth grade next year. We project to have over 200 students in that school, and the school has a Spanish focus. The school will continue to expand until we get to sixth grade. In addition, we opened, reopened the building Spencer, which is in Wanted Hills. It has a, also an equity focus in terms of gifted and exceptional students, exceptional meaning those kids who fall just below the gifted range, who ordinarily would not receive any special educational services. We opened that school with third through eighth grade. Next school year, it will be expanding to include ninth grade. And so the thought for this school is for it to eventually be a third through 12th grade school. That school will have close to 250 students next year. Clifton Area Neighborhood School expansion is another building, an actual physical building that will be opening. So as you know, we have actually started the program at our Rising Star Center, which is in the old, remodeled Vine Street School right down the street, with kindergarten classrooms and pre-K classrooms. Next year, we will be expanding that to first grade, so it will be a pre-K through first grade program. The program is still going to be at Vine Street, considering the fact that we do not yet have occupancy of the Clifton School, which we will regain in September, at which time we'll be doing an evaluation to see how quickly we can actually get into that school in terms of transporting our students. We do have a group who has been working over the course of this year, a community group to recruit and populate that school. And so we expect to have a pretty robust program next year, as well as the following year, to be fully within that school. So we're very excited about that work. Mercy is another site that will be coming online with Cincinnati Public Schools. We're very excited about this campus because it offers us a lot of opportunity to quite honestly do some very creative and innovative things that we currently don't have within the district. We anticipate having occupancy of that location in the fall, although we doubt that we'll be able to open it as a school. So we're going to use the summer as well as part of next year to really work with the community and the board to identify the exact type of programming that may go into that site. So this is a site that we're very excited to add to our complement of schools within our district. So more to come on that. As we think about other sites in which we will be expanding preschool, along with our partners in Preschool Promise, so we expand, we will be expanding Carthage next school year. Carthage is a school that we also opened this year, so we anticipate being able to offer more preschool classrooms there. Sailor Park, as well as the Mount Airy area, which quite honestly is somewhat of a desert when it comes to preschool. So we'll be working with our internal team, as well as Preschool Promise, to be able to expand our offerings in these areas as well. And then last but not least, we have the Aiken High School. And I put this up here because, as many of you may know, part of Aiken's campus had been the host for the Carpe Diem School, which is now closed. And so we have a pretty large area that we will be moving into and will be expanding that footprint within the area to offer more programming for our students as well. So more to come in terms of what that may exactly look like. So I think it's really clear and positive to say that families are choosing Cincinnati Public Schools, and so we are continuing to build out our footprint, offer our families lots of different offerings. In addition, we will be considering with the board another site to reopen as a program site for a school, and that is the Jacobs Center. And so over the next several years, we have a lot of building and expanding to do as, again, families return to the school district. So we're very excited about this opportunity to expand our offerings and to offer many diverse options for our families. And that's an update.
Madam Vice President?
Oh, very, very nice. I think what you've captured continues to put a smile on my face, and Ms. Bolton wanted to say swoop.
I did want to say swoop.
You did hear her say that. So, no, we're, we're very excited and very proud of what we're doing.
Yeah, Superintendent, it's, it's a great trajectory. Congratulations to all the board members on overseeing a somewhat rarity in urban districts, which is growth, growth and progress, which is awesome. Our economic development director is still here, and I will make him blush for a few seconds. In my seven years at City Hall, he is the most responsive, most effective economic development director we've had. And I only mention that to say, I hope you all will, as you continue to grow, and as the city can be a partner on, you know, very basic real estate stuff, not that we have infinite massive parcels or that our partners always have accommodating parcels, but Mr. Dent, Director Denning, is only ever a phone call away, and I know how eager he is to help you all continue to grow, if the city can ever be useful in real estate matters. So thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you.
Resolution, Madam Vice President?
Yeah. Mr. Morosky, is there something you wanted to mention on this CPS Safe Schools resolution?
Well, I just figured since we had everybody here, but I think it's been taken care of, actually. I was communicating with Councilman Lansman's office today, so I don't have any follow-up, except for if anybody's watching from the other governing municipalities that touch our district, we appreciate your support for our resolution to reduce gun violence and promote safe schools. So I'm good, and thank you again to your office, Councilman Lansman, for supporting us and jumping out there.
Certainly so. And I did see that correspondence, and so thank you very much.
Great. And one other example of positive partnership, just to deliver some good news from our end back to you all, and that is tomorrow, is tomorrow Wednesday? Tomorrow's Wednesday. We will officially pass the legislation, making changes to the city zoning code to accommodate community learning centers. Obviously, you all have been amazing champions of the notion, Ms. Bolton, of, you know, schools as more than just schools, the school as campus. And, you know, our, our grandfather's zoning code might have accommodated our grandfather's schools, but this is no longer just one building and one parcel. So as we came up against incredible opportunities, which often receive funding from philanthropic resources, things like the new health center at Academy of World Languages, additions in the neighborhood in Lower Price Hill for Euler School, but that are still part of it, our zoning code sometimes put hurdles that were unnecessary. So I especially want to thank my chief of staff, Alita Kamine, who really engaged the process beautifully. And as of tomorrow, it should officially be a change in law to make sure that our zoning code specifically accommodates the wonderful work of CPS Community Learning Center. So thank you all for that.
Thank you.
You always got to have a good hype man or hype woman in the audience to, you know, get your applause lines. And I think that's Craig Rosen tonight, but I know he's, he's got good backup. Madam Chair, we've sometimes, we've mostly sorted this out offline. I don't know if there are specific things you all want to call out now for future topics. We've certainly got one, which will be a permanent topic for probably the next year or so. I think we did want to propose the evening of October 9th for the next ACES meeting. I know it's a little bit into the future, but throw that out. And again, a lot of this, we can probably settle offline, but I didn't know if anyone wanted to call out topics or dates.
I do have a couple, actually. As, October 9th is a great date because we will have started school and settled in for a little bit. And so if we can continue to be excited and give an update as to how we've started a new school year, especially any new sites or programs in our Vision 2023.0, I believe, how we're doing with that, I think would be a great update to, to this committee, along with a continued conversation related to safety. As we talk about safe routes, as we talk about safety in general, by that time, we will have worked on the, the teams getting together to talk about pedestrian safety and that. So those would be the couple of things that I would suggest.
And Ms. Kamine, you know, I want to be mindful that we, we don't have, that we don't have too much on an agenda, that it starts to dilute itself, but also have here a conversation around vision and dental resources and support for CPS students. And also, maybe at that juncture, you all can give us an update on sort of the changes to the LSDMC model that I believe are going to be implemented, so we can sort those final details out offline. All right. Madam Vice President, do you want to close us out here?
I will. Any other board business? No?
Just that, I probably won't be at that meeting. It's my dad's 80th birthday, that day.
Well, we'll work on it.
Bring him here. Board Member Morosky, that's the obvious resolution for Dan Morosky.
We'll work on it.
Where would he rather be?
I appreciate the public's time. I appreciate your time. This is always a great conversation. I look forward to future conversations. We are adjourned.
Great. Thanks so much, Eric. I appreciate it, yeah.
This gets better and better.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think we're in a, I think we're in a good groove.
I mean, tell the topics, but, you know, that, that was really well, how we allowed the public to talk through it.
Yeah, no. I agree. I agree 100%.
I would not think that was great.
And also, I mean, I think it's, you know, it doesn't need to be 10 years. I think it can incorporate some other stuff, too, so.
And I appreciate you saying, you know, there's no statute that says two decades, one decade.
Right, right.
And then I think, too, to just make...